Let's call the court meeting to order. We had another event that conflicted with our regular meeting on Tuesday night. This is the first special meeting of May 2022. Remind everyone to turn their phones off, turn them off or turn them on silent. And I'd like to ask Commissioner Brian Booth if he would do the invocation for us.
Dear heavenly fathers, we come for you this morning, dear Lord. Lord, watch over this court, dear heavenly father, and watch all of those here, dear Lord. We will do everything that be the better men of this county, dear heavenly father, that it be for the help of the people throughout this county, dear Lord. Watch over us in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Police, would you please call the roll?
Judge Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Robertson, Commissioner Tackett?
Here.
Commissioner Booth?
Here.
We have a quorum, just for purpose of the record so the public will know, Commissioner Robertson is under the weather. I called to check on him last night and he had laid down, was not feeling well, but I talked to Missy and we hope he gets to feeling better today. He's gonna try to make it, but I'm not optimistic based on how bad he was feeling last night. So this stuff's going around and we hope that he bounces back quickly. So at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Fabian Little if he would lead us in pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The Constitution of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Next item is the approval of the minutes of the April 19th, 2022 meeting of the Pike County Fiscal Court. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Booth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Next item is the adoption of a resolution approving the execution of the Pike County Road Aid Cooperative Program Agreement between the Pike County Fiscal Court, Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, Department of Rural and Municipal Aid for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022, as provided in KRS, and accepting all roads and streets referred to therein as being part of the county road system. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing now, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is the adoption of a resolution of the Pike County Fiscal Court authorizing the filing of LGEDF House Bill 1 project in the amount of $1 million in single county coal severance bridge and road repair, replacement, resurfacing, authorizing and directing the county judge to execute all documents which are deemed necessary by DLG to carry out this project and authorizing the county judge to act as authorized correspondent for the project. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Booth? Any other questions or discussions? Seeing now, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is the adoption of a resolution authorizing the filing of an LGEDF House Bill 1 project grant application for up to $145,409 in single county coal severance tax funds for the Elkhorn City Wastewater Collection Improvement Project, authorizing and directing the county judge to execute any documents which are deemed necessary by DLG to carry out the project and authorizing the county judge to act as the authorized correspondent for the project. This is Eric's application. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing now, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Yes. Next item is the adoption of a resolution in support of Kentucky Homeland Security's nonprofit security grant program, grant to purchase automated external defibrillators for the Sycamore Volunteer Fire Department, authorization for the judge executive to execute all documents. Basically, this is a grant application we're doing. We're acting as the authorizing agency. We're doing this to help the Sycamore Volunteer Fire Department. We've talked to Mary Morton about this project. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing now, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is the approval to execute court facilities local government reimbursement form for fiscal year 2023, which will run from July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023 for the Pike County Judicial Center. Is there a motion to approve? Is it a motion, Brian? Motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any other questions or discussions? Seeing now, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is the authorization for the American Rescue Plan Act state and local fiscal recovery fund expenditure in the amount of $1,300,000 to transfer funds. This is where we bought the new radio system for the fire departments and EMS. So if anyone wants to know where that money's going, this is where we bought a completely new radio system to replace the out of date and inadequate system that air firefighters and EMS rescue squads were depending on. Is there a motion to authorize?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing now, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. I'm gonna pass over the next item until Kevin gets here. He's in court. Mr. Keane is in court today doing county business and he'll be here shortly. So we'll pass over item number seven until he gets here. The next item is acknowledgement or receipt of audit of the Pike County Fiscal Court for year ended June 30th, 2021. This was audited by the Auditor of Public Accounts. And I, first of all, want to commend Frankie Stacy, our county treasurer, for his hard work. This audit did not have a single comment, a single adverse finding, and this is the third year in a row that the fiscal court's audits have just been as good as you can get. I would ask folks to remember, you know, what it was like before this administration when the county was bouncing checks and we lost our credit rating. This is how we go about getting our credit rating back. This is how we go about reestablishing goodwill with banks, with credit rating agencies, with bonding institutions, and this will save the taxpayers money, particularly when we bond the landfill project in the, in the spring. You know, the better our credit, the lower the interest rate. The worse our credit, the higher the interest rate. And, you know, we came in office, there was a pretty big, pretty deep hole, and we've, we dug our way out of that. It's not been easy. We've had to make some tough decisions. But a lot of this has to do with the work that Frankie's done, the work that Pam Vanover, our finance commissioner's done. We've got our financial affairs in order on both the revenue side and the expenditure side. There was not a single question about our procurement policies. There was not a single question about how our money was accounted for or spent. So I want to thank all the staff members that, that helped make this possible. Jeanie keeps the office running, Frankie in the treasurer's office, Pam in the finance office, Stephanie and Chuck in Solid Waste. I want to thank all of you for what you've done in making this work, and it's a huge improvement over what it was like three years ago. And I think it has a lot to do, not with me, it has nothing to do with me, as much as it has to do with the people that I have working around me and that are serving the county. And I want to thank all of you for, for a job well done. And again, I think that the, the public owes a debt of gratitude to all of you who have helped right this ship, considering where we were just three years ago. Greg Fannin is another person I need to mention. Greg has saved this county a massive amount of money on procurement, on purchasing. Greg, thank you. So the next item is acknowledgement or receipt of the audit of the Pike County Fiscal Court for the year ended June 30th, 2021. Is there a motion to acknowledge?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing now, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right. The next item is second reading of a proposed ordinance amending the Pike County Administrative Code, Section 190, boards and commissions, adding members to the Pike County Trails Advisory Board. This is, Colonel, would you please present the second reading of this?
Judge, what we'll discuss here is, will be the language that's being added. Nothing is being deleted. Under the county judge executive initial appointments, there's gonna be new language. Two members of the public will serve until the expiration of their elected term in year Under the section headed County Judge Executive Initial Appointments and Approved by the Fiscal Court, three members' initial term shall be for four years, starting June 1st, 2022 through June 1st, 2026, and then every four years thereafter. That is what has been added.
Is there a motion to adopt this amendment to the Section 190 of the Administrative Code relating to the Pike County Trails Advisory Board adding four members?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing now, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. My allergies are killing me today. All right. Next item is the first reading of proposed ordinance amending Pike County Administrative Code, Section 462, related to sick leave. There will be no vote at this time. This is simply the first reading. What this basically does is it gives our employees more flexibility in seeking to use their sick time. Currently, they can only use sick time if they've been absent for four days, except in the case of surgery, hospitalization. But we're also putting it if they've been to after-hours clinics, urgent care clinics, or physician appointments with a doctor's note. This just gives our employees a little bit more flexibility in how they use their sick time. Any questions about that before we do the reading? All right. Colonel, go ahead and present the first reading of this amendment to Section 462 relating to sick leave.
All right. It's Section 2, subsection A. We're gonna strike out one little word, "or," and then they're gonna add visits to after-hours clinics, urgent care clinics, or physician appointments with a doctor's note. That will be added to the...
So this will be on the agenda at the next meeting. The next item is a first reading of the 2022-2023 Pike County Fiscal Court Proposed Budget Ordinance. Again, I want to thank Frankie and Reggie for helping put this together. It's very similar to last year's budgets. The biggest difference would be that it does have some additional grant monies in there. When you look at the, the budget number, this budget's about 60 million, but keep in mind, there's a lot of one-time monies, grants, we may or may not get that we've put in here. So that number is somewhat inflated. When you get right down to it, you're, you're probably around $25 or $26 million in actual budget numbers. Would that be somewhere in the ballpark, Frankie? Would you agree with that? So those are the monies that we actually have to work with when you take the grant money and the one-time monies out of it. So Roy, would you just present the first reading of the budget? I think you can probably do that, simply stating the amount of money that's projected to be expended in the money that's...
Well, Judge, I packed my lunch and I was prepared to read all 40 pages.
Well, I'm... I'll be in the office. Call me when you get done.
All right. I, I am gonna say the treasurer wants everyone to know, if you want a copy of this budget, you can come by the courthouse and you can request it. You can go to the judge's office on the second floor. Now, if a lot of people show up, because it is 40-some pages, but we will get you a copy if you want to see it, or you can go up to the treasurer on the fourth floor of the courthouse. But basically, what I'm gonna do is, as Judge said, we are gonna, we're proposing, or the court is proposing that they'll get revenues of $62,445,303 in revenue. Our expenses are projected to be $62,445,303.
Sixty-two? Say that again. You said sixty-two thousand?
Sixty-two million. Did I say it wrong? Four hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and three dollars. It's millions. It's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money.
But if you, I'll show you. This is about a 40-page document, and it does list every bit of revenue that they're projected to get, and it also shows you where the money is spent. If you want to see where your county's spending its money, you can get a copy of this.
Thank you, sir. All right. So this will be on the agenda for action at the next meeting, subject to int...
That'll be pending that I get it back from...
Oh, that's right. As soon as you get it back from DLG.
I'll have it on the media court meeting once I get it back.
Gotcha. Thank you. All right. Next item is the awarding of bids. Greg, do you have any? All right. Next item is the Pike County Road Supervisor Report. Mr. Little, it's good to see you back at work. Hope you're feeling better.
How's our, how's our road rehabilitation program going right now?
It's going well. We finished up over in Pounder Mill, Board Fork, and then El Branch. We finished those up. Of course, we're off today because of the rain. Start back at it Monday, but everything's going well. I've talked to Mountain, been on the phone with them this morning. They're possibly going to do a little paving for us the latter part of next week.
And what, any idea where, what area they'll be doing that in?
I do.
You tell me.
I can't. Left Fork Valley Creek. It's a close, reason that is is because, and honestly, the reason that road is, is because it's hard for them because they are laying the asphalt over here on 119. That is a close haul for them, so they can knock it out fast.
That road's in bad shape. And there's, right, I was gonna tell you, right where that cliff fell off, it's in bad, bad shape.
Yeah.
And then Meat House of Johns Creek is...
It's on there, the, for Mountain. Mountain would be the one to pave that off. So it's all just, you know, what the hang-up right now is, is because of 119. They're using about all their trucks and resources to resurface that.
Okay. All right. Any idea about the Kenny Street Bridge? Any idea when we'll get, have we, have we got, we don't have the permit back?
No, we're, we're not completely finalized yet, but once, once that's done, it's kind of, I need to get some more of this paving done. Get a couple guys hired and then we're going to, and then we will start that bridge.
Now, just so the public knows, how many, how many employees are we needing right now in the road department? I know we have two mower positions open.
We've got two mower positions open. I've got two equipment operator positions for the special crew. That's where it comes in about the bridge. And then we've got those 10 temp jobs.
So basically, we've got four permanent jobs and 10 temporary openings.
Yes, we do.
In our road department right now that we can't fill. And we've had folks calling in wanting to know about the weeds being cut.
We're mowing.
We are mowing.
Yeah.
Every day, but we've got two mowers that we don't have operators for.
Exactly. Two new mowers.
Two brand-new mowers that we don't have people to operate.
They do have air conditioner in them, too.
They have. Got a radio also. Even listening, I mean, it's pretty, it's a pretty good gig.
I had a guy ask me yesterday, "When we gonna get to the weeds?" And I said, "You want a job?" You know, we didn't, I said, "We..." I think at that point, first week, what, we just had two mowers running, three? You know?
Yeah, we're, we're...
I think there's a total of 18 spots open at the county right now.
The fiscal court is no different than any other business right now. You know, our ambulance services can't find paramedics and EMTs. You know, our hospitals can't find nurses and, and other employees. You know, laborers are hard to find, people willing to work are hard to find right now. And if you're listening to this, or if you are listening to this and you have family members that are looking for a job, we probably have some openings on Solid Waste right now. So we're encouraging people to apply. Give CDL, Class A CDL. If you have any experience operating heavy equipment or any type of, of tractors, give us a call. If you're interested in working the Solid Waste program, give us a call, 432-6247, and an application can be put in, in the county judge's office. Anita has applications, and you can sit right there and put them in, and we'll process those just as soon as we can. So in any event, Fabian, we have the completed work orders. Looks like there's been a lot of work to be done. And I want to just remind people, if they want to get on the Pike TV, on their Facebook page or on YouTube, if you want to know what our road department does, these work orders that show what's been done since the last court meeting is on there. It's as transparent as you can get. So we just ask people to be patient. There's a thousand miles of county roads. We are doing a lot of paving this year. Can we pave every road? No, because you're, you're talking about, you know, millions and millions and millions of dollars, tens of millions of dollars. If we, you know, we just don't have that much money. But we are making a significant dent in catching up some of the roads that have been neglected for the longest.
Probably the best that I've known of. And like I said, everyone, I guess, knows, I mean, I've been here for 30 years now. So, so is, and I've never known of a court to be able to resurface as much as what's been done in this four years.
And the sad part is, there's still a lot of them out there that needs to be.
Oh, absolutely.
That's the sad part. I mean, you get two or three or whatever in good shape, and you think, boy, I'm doing pretty good, and then you run a few more roads and you realize, wow, I've got these many more that needs to be done.
Well, I mean, you know, we, we paved Sycamore over in Johns Creek. We did Wright Fork of Brushy all the way across Ford Mountain.
To 881.
To 881.
Yeah.
And, but when you, but when you, but when you go down Main Brushy...
That's right.
We've got a, we've got a request in for discretionary funding, but you're talking about nine miles of roads that are like driving on washboards.
Did they ever give us anything on that discretionary money? Are we are a chance of getting it? We ain't gonna...
I, I can tell you, the legislature reduced the governor's discretionary road funds from 17 million down to 10 million. So with 120 counties, you can do the math. We're not gonna get the discretionary money that we've had in the past because the governor's hands are tied. You know, the county gets about $2.4 billion. Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just compare this. Yeah, if you go over to other counties around us, they've only got three, four, five, six people working in their road departments. Some counties are only able to pave, you know, four or five miles a year. Think about that, four or five miles when they've got 300 miles or 400 miles of roads. This, this year, we're probably gonna be somewhere around 55 or 60 miles.
Seventy-six last year.
Seventy-six miles last year. Fifty-some miles the year before that. I would say we're gonna be somewhere around 200 miles in four years.
Yeah.
Now, that sounds like a lot of progress. Maybe 225 miles, somewhere in that neighborhood, Fabian? It sounds like a lot of, of mileage until you think about how many road miles we have, but it's probably more than's ever been done in a four-year period.
I, I mean, I honestly, I don't know of, yeah, another court that's been able to do this much resurfacing.
Well...
We've done a little bit in each area. I mean, that's, that's been really bad roads.
Yeah.
And, and, and some of the roads that Commissioner Booth had done in his district last year were flooded in August and wiped out, and then got flooded again, and we had brand-new pavement that got washed out.
Yeah. I mean, it's just like, I mean, just one road that jumps out to me is Octavia. I mean, we've not been able to get in there, which we will here shortly, to try to patch up those spots where the flood had damaged all the, all those spots up in there. But hopefully, we can grab it.
Then you have Left Fork that got damaged that we just paved, Big Blue Springs we just paved, got re-damaged and...
Yeah.
You know, a lot of people don't want, you know, I understand, but patience. I mean, that's, you know, it just takes time. It all didn't get, it all didn't get tore up in one day.
No.
You know?
Yeah. Well, I mean, you guys, we're making good headway on them. I mean, we, we are. Everyone's working hard and keeping their head down, and we're making good progress.
Each year, you keep gaining.
You do.
It takes time. Each year, you keep gaining.
Well, we're gonna be aggressive about trying to reach out for any state or federal resources we can to maximize our road work. We've been very successful in getting money for emergency bridge replacement, and...
We have a request in right now for, for some emergency bridge replacements.
I think we got approved for one on Gin Fork. Is that right?
That's the one I was speaking, yeah.
Yeah. So we got that one, Gin Fork, approved. I think there's been a lot of people asking about that one.
Yeah.
But, you know, we just have to get to them as we can, as we can fund them, and, but we are spending a lot of money into our road system, substantially more than, than in any, in recent history at least, so...
On the discretionary money, will we know soon on that, do you think?
Honestly, I, I tell you what, I'm, I'm saying you're not gonna probably know until July.
When do we have to have it flex money in?
I mean... We need it in, we can start now. Honestly, we can start on your flex right now and turn that in.
I got that one road that...
I, like Commissioner Tackett and I, we have most of his done, or a lot of it.
I'm just holding off on the one because I had it turned in on discretionary money, so if we're not gonna get it, I'm just gonna turn it in on flex.
Yeah. And you may want to do that.
When, when will we be able to start paving the flex? After July?
Yeah, after, after, after it is signed by you and Mr. Gray. Definitely after Gray.
It won't be, it will be after July 1, correct?
It will be.
I think we drove, what, a couple weeks ago, a couple mile, or in District 2, to get some of the flex money.
Yeah.
It's gonna be about 350 this year?
That's generally what it is, around 350, 370 is what we usually end up getting.
About 127,000 for each district. Is that what it was?
Yes.
Something broke down.
Close to that.
Somewhere in that, give or take.
You're probably talking seven miles of paving.
Come up, it usually comes up to just a little over a mile per road lot. About a mile per road lots, about what we've been averaging.
About, it's about seven miles.
Yeah.
So that's, that's not a lot when you consider...
Oh, no. It's, it's not, not considering what each, each area's probably got 300, right around 300 mile, a little over 300 mile per, per lot. Yeah, it is higher. We know that. We know it's higher, we just don't...
And, you know, some lots have more road miles to cover than others. And we've worked around, we've moved some stuff around.
We have.
For instance, you know, at one time, Phelps Road Lot was taking care of Stone Cold.
Yes.
That made zero sense. Leo, when Leo was magistrate, his lot had to come over and take care of the haulers off Coon Creek. So we've worked some of this around just to make it more convenient.
make it more convenient. And I, I do want to mention something real quick. I mentioned Leo. Leo Murphy, former magistrate, is one of the finest men ever. And he is fighting Parkinson's disease, and I ran into him at hillbilly days. He just wanted me to remind everyone, ask, ask people to remember him in their prayers because he's been facing a tough battle.
Exactly.
Did a great job when he was taking care of, of his district, particularly, my mother-in-law thought the world of him because of, he did a great job on Burner Fork and took care of Coon Creek. You know, and that's a big area to come from, from, from all the way across from Mouth Card.
Yeah.
Back across from that Belcher Road Lot, so.
He's telling me about, I spoke with him at hillbilly days, too. Somebody was telling me this week, I tried to stop up there a couple times and check on him, but Kenneth's kind of doing better, too. He'd been a little under the weather.
Yeah, Kenneth had a fall. Kenneth Robinson, we will wish him a speedy recovery as well. But, you know, it's a big county, as, as we all know, and, but we appreciate all the work that the Road Department's done to try to get the flood damage fixed, and now trying to get some of these roads repaired and getting the maintenance called up.
Yeah, I'm glad you said, which I know everyone here feels the same way, but we do have a great group of guys working for us in that Road Department. I mean, all of the, but I just can speak on the Road Department. Those guys are great. They work hard. And, and like I said earlier, we're, we're getting it done. We're making progress.
Gotcha. All right. Is there a motion to approve the work orders list for the Pike County Road Department?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett is our second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is Treasurer's business. Mr. Williamson.
Acknowledged receipt of the Treasurer's monthly financial statement ending April 30th, 2022.
Is there a motion to acknowledge receipt of the Treasurer's monthly financial statement for April 30th, 2022?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Booth. I'll make a second. Any other questions or discussions? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Authorization of annual standing order to pre-approve certain recurring expenses for fiscal year 2022, 2023. And this will be attached to our budget when I send it to DLG.
Is there a motion to authorize annual standing order to pre-approve certain recurring expenses for FY 2022, 2023?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett is our second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Authorized checks for lodging, registration, and expenses for any employee needs to attend the KCJEA/KMCA Joint Summer Conference, June 7th through the 9th, at the Marriott Griffin Gate Hotel in Lexington.
Is there a motion to authorize?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Booth. Second by?
Yeah.
Commissioner Tackett. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
That's all I have. Judge?
All right. We do have a need for executive session, and I have some need for some fire, and my allergies are absolutely driving me nuts today. Let's see here. Roy, would you please instruct the public on the relevant provisions of Kentucky, KRS Chapter 61, the Kentucky Open Meetings Act, as it relates to entry into executive session?
Yes, Judge. The Fiscal Court is allowed to enter executive session under KRS 61.810, Paragraph C, to discuss proposed or pending litigation, and Paragraph F, to discuss specific personnel issues.
Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett is our second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. We will stand in recess for executive session and return as the call of the chair. Mr. Williamson, could I see you back in the office real quick?
Paul.
Thank you. Is there a motion to exit executive session? Motion by Commissioner Tackett is our second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. It is my motion to hire Damian Wright as a loader at Solid Waste Lot 1 at 2H rated pay effective 4/25/22, and to accept the resignation of Michael Irwin effective 5/18/22. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any questions or discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is approval of a contract between Pike County Fiscal Court and Justin McCoy and Josh Sanders. These gentlemen have agreed to operate the Phelps Pool with stipulation that they have an insurance policy of $1 million, indemnifying, hold the county harmless for any claims that may take place. This will be a cheaper option than us trying to hire people when you factor in pension costs, health insurance benefits, and so forth. This is similar to the contract that we had two years ago with the operators at the Phelps and Hardy Park Pools. County will help pick up some of the cost to operate the infrastructure there. But this, hopefully, we'll get the pool back open at Phelps this summer. We're also looking for someone that might be interested to operate the Hardy Pool as well. So if anyone's out there interested in it, please feel free to give us a call. So is there a motion to authorize this contract between the county and Mr. McCoy and Mr. Sanders as set forth in the package?
Motion.
With a motion by Commissioner Booth is our second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Anything from the Department of Supervisors? I'm not going to go through everybody today. All right. Judge Hickman is on vacation. Colonel, do you have anything?
No.
Mr. King? All right. Gentlemen, y'all have anything today?
Judge, I'm just, we're trying everything we can to get the mowers up. We're just, hopefully, we'll get some people hired this week, and we'll have them all out mowing by next week sometime. Everybody have a good weekend and safe.
The only thing I have, Judge, I just hope everybody has a good weekend. It's Mother's Day weekend, and everyone go out and spend time with their mother. And I'd like to wish all the moms out there a Happy Mother's Day. That's all I've got.
Thank you. I'd like to reiterate, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. We will have a, an open house tonight from 6:00 to 7:30 to let people in the community come and look at the new Phelps Courthouse renovation. It will be the new community center. It will be over there from 6:00 to 7:30. Stop by, take a look at it. Hopefully, be opened up here in a few days for use by the public. Still have a little bit of work to do to it. I do want to just extend the sympathies of the Fiscal Court and the employees of the Pike County Fiscal Court, to Connie Crawford, Tim Crawford, who retired from Solid Waste, passed away a few days ago. And we have not had a meeting, and I just wanted to ask everyone to remember Connie and the family in the prayers. Tim is a good man, had been battling cancer, and we want to, again, extend our condolences to the family. Also, as I mentioned earlier, please remember my friend Leo Murphy in your prayers. Leo specifically asked me to request prayer for him because of the condition that he's, he's been fighting. We saw him over hillbilly days. He seems to be doing some better, but it's a struggle for him. He's lost a lot of weight. And just remember Leo and the Murphy family as well. So with that being said, is there any other business to come before the court? If not, I'd like to ask Gary Sloan if he would say the benediction for us, if he wouldn't mind doing that. And then we'll conclude with a motion to adjourn.
Father God, we thank you for the blessings that you have bestowed upon each and every one of us, Father God. Father God, we thank you for the blessings that you have bestowed upon the leadership of this county, Father God, as you guide and direct it, Father God. I seek your wisdom. Father God, we lift the family of Tim Conley up to you, Father God. And, Father God, we ask a good touch upon you. Father God, we give you all the praise, all the honor, and all the glory. And, Father, we ask...
Amen. Thank you, sir. If there's no other business, then we will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett is our second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. We are adjourned.